All right, so we are back. A second session. Probably the public portion of the meeting's order. So we're going to do a public comment. We're going to have initial... Well, it was a little bit of a public here in general. But we are going to have an initial public comment. And then we're going to have also a period after the budget presentation for public comment on the budgets. People can give comment on what's been presented. Given the number of people here, unless it grows, I think we have plenty of time for that public comment. It's at 35. But if the number does grow, we will make sure that there's some sort of time limit. So it's orderly. And then also, I just want to reiterate in order this portion to show up. We'll have that public comment session that the board will discuss. And we will not be taking comments from the public during the board portion of the discussion. So any initial public comments? If you step up if you have some? Great. Otherwise, go with the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve this presented.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
There's additional ones here.
What's your consent agenda, Jim? The official curriculum.
Minutes of November 14th. Division Statement Co-Curricular Contracts Policy for Adaptation and Warrants. So, apparently additional warrants. I find one.
I'm looking at my... She's good now.
We're good.
I passed those on to Jim. I'm actually not able to sign those anymore.
So we got them.
So Jim's got them.
So I've only signed one warrant.
No, that's the one.
That's just the one.
Yep.
I can hear most of it.
We'll shout. So all is in favor of consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Learning focus.
For the ladies.
Hi. Actually, before you start, let me just preface, just to give the board the context of what I asked you to talk about today. A while ago, Jim asked when the students came on the board to talk about how the student... The avenues students had towards addressing when they had a safety concern at school and rape culture and things of that nature. So I posed that question to the students for this time around. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew where that was coming from.
Yeah, just to add a little on that, just kind of like, you know, are the students feeling that if there is an issue and they're having a problem, that they have a safe environment, they can go and have that resolved? And that's known? And it's both known and people feel comfortable with what's there?
So go ahead, Mark.
Sorry. Okay. So just following our normal format, we just have a few celebrations. So to begin with, the Montpelier High School mask is having their production of Once on This Island this weekend, which they've been working on since like the beginning of the school year. So it's very exciting.
The Racial Justice Alliance has already started planning our Black History Month events, just to make sure that it goes as smoothly as possible. And so we've broken up into committees to make sure that we're, I don't know, working as hard as we can and being as effective as possible. So we're already excited.
And as you probably all know, series rose on to the top of the Capitol Building. And the honor choir sang and some UES classes attended. So that's really cool.
And the honor choir was wonderful.
I'll let them know.
And this weekend, MHS Wild, which is sort of our outing club and focuses on getting out and enjoying nature and what Vermont has to offer, went snowshoeing on Mount Hunger.
And at UES, a worker from Prevent Child Abuse Vermont has been visiting to teach some classes about like respecting other people's faces and their bodies, which is kind of just amazing and really cool that it's starting so early.
And MHS Earth Group has started working on some new signage in the cafeteria because we want to make sure that students are aware of what they can compost and trash and recycling. And I'm helping make those signs. So it's kind of exciting. And we're also just working on our larger campaigns of sustainability and making sure our students are aware of how they can be more eco-friendly in their daily practices and food waste in the cafeteria and student activism in regards to, I don't know, helping fight climate change. So that's good. I can move into student concerns. And we wanted to highlight continued efforts to support diversity and inclusion in Montpelier-Roxbury Public Schools education and specifically speak to the equity policy. And I myself am a member of Montpelier's Racial Justice Alliance. And at today's lunch meeting, I asked them, like, hey, I'm presenting tonight at the meeting. And I was wondering if there's anything you wanted me to speak to. And they had some really important points that I also agree with. And they wanted to place emphasis and highlight the importance of an equity specialist in sort of just every aspect of the lives of our students throughout the district and ensuring that like from the time they're elementary school students to when they're high schoolers, they don't have to face the feeling of being marginalized. And whether it is in regards to their identities or just social dynamics in some way, that they can be supported. And I think that having someone hired by the district that is trained in supporting equity in education and knows the ins and outs of it and is able to place their... Just to have their job be placing focus on ensuring that all of our policies are equitable is really fundamental to ensuring that our students receive an equitable education. And they also wanted to highlight the importance of the language in the equity policy and to make sure that it... Yes, it's meant to support all of our students in the district. But when we speak of equity, we also speak of uplifting students who are disadvantaged, whether it's socio-economically or whether they face gender bias or racial discrimination or some form of, I don't know, discouraging environments that they have to handle in growing up in today's society. And that... So although we want to support all students and the equity policy will do so, we need to make sure that we're placing enough focus on supporting marginalized students and that the language of the policy reflects that. And we're excited to... The Equity Policy Committee, which includes Emma, me, and some members of the Gender Sexuality Alliance at MHS and our Racial Justice Alliance are going to meet with Libby next week and really just work on organizing our thoughts and brainstorming to see how best we can move forward and make progress.
And just really quickly, just going off of that, student needs. Just, we want to continue to bring this up and prioritize the achievement gap. Just focus on like research and increasing professional development, just to ensure that all students are learning at the highest levels possible and that biases and interfering with their capability to access the wonderful education that we have here. Yeah. And so moving on to the question that Jim asked.
And so speaking of educational resources, the question that was asked to us specifically was, what avenues are available to students to ensure they feel safe at school? And channels of communication around issues that arise? And we think that it really speaks to how resources are made available to students in all aspects of their life here in the district. And when we speak of the achievement gap, we speak of educational resources and making sure that they're empowered as students and as learners and as global citizens and that opportunities are made... They're made aware of opportunities and are able to access the educational resources that are available to them and just reach their full potential as students. And it kind of... It relates to what we had previously spoken on as well in relation to the achievement gap, which is sometimes teachers and staff have different expectations of different students because they get to... They coordinate with them on a really personal level in a smaller school community and environment. And oftentimes, by cultivating, I don't know, close relationships with their students and the students in the district, they will treat certain students differently. And certain students will be comfortable with certain teachers. And a lot of times that reflects in how students navigate the resources made available to them in the district. So there might be specific roles of support, like social workers or guidance counselors, but students might not know how to reach out to them. And a lot of times, when I asked my fellow peers at MHS about how they felt and who they were most comfortable reaching out to, and they mentioned specific teachers that they were able to cultivate a close relationship with in their time as their students and really felt like they could trust. And a lot of times, that isn't necessarily universal with every staff member. And yeah, so resources might be available to students, but they might not know about them. And we need to ensure that more students are aware of support systems here, rather than just a select few that are viewed as, I don't know, like the right fit for certain opportunities or might seem like they need extra support because it's often hard to communicate that.
So you mentioned rape culture when you brought up this question. And something that I thought a lot about was how we're not impervious to the turmoil, like social and political turmoil that might be happening in our country and world. But I do think that we do a great job at Montpelier High School, in my experience, and hopefully in other, in the lower schools, to acknowledge and discuss those events. And I think that does a good... That really helps kind of support students in like just dealing with those situations. But at the same time, I think that we should be assessing gender bias a little bit more closely, like gender bias in the classrooms and dress codes even, athletic codes. Yeah. Facilities like gender-neutral bathrooms, those have all been very... Like focusing on those things would be helpful in making young women specifically feel safe in schools.
And when we speak about sort of the fact that we aren't impervious to the greater societal climate of today's world, our goal isn't really to insulate students from the outside world when we try to change school culture, but it's to provide the infrastructure to make sure that they're able to be prepared for being socially responsible people and being globally-minded citizens. And that includes how they navigate rape culture and whether they are perpetrators. And so we have student support groups, like the Conversation, which meets during Solen Blocks about once a month or so. And that's a way for students to facilitate and partake in dialogue regarding rape culture and trying to change the culture on campus. And I think that our student groups have been really effective in promoting, I don't know, a more positive culture, but that there's still work to be done in that regard.
Also, sorry, this might be a lot to be throwing at the board. But also just like starting early, I think something that I really appreciated seeing was the worker from Preventing Child Abuse Vermont visiting the elementary school and just talking about consent and issues that relate to sexual harassment and violence. And just starting those things, those concepts early, does a lot in preventing really like icky environments for young women. And... Yeah. And also it helps promote like intellectual risk-taking in like young women when they feel comfortable in their environment, in their learning environment. And that can be physically or academically, et cetera, et cetera.
I have a question. I have a question. I assume we track reported incidents related to harassments and bullying of different kinds. Are we seeing an increase or a decrease? Or is there any trends related to that?
To my principal colleagues. Do you all see an increase or a decrease or staying the same with HHB investigations?
Overall, I would say there's a decrease in the number of instances that get to be... That confirm a policy violation.
Right.
There are certainly always inappropriate student behaviors that we are navigating. Particularly at the middle school, there's not a lot of learning around the social dynamics of how to be a good citizen. But in terms of violating the policy, those numbers are not going up.
Similar. I think the numbers are steady and declining, but I don't know... I'm always sort of suspect of, you know, what the real experience is for students versus what ends up reported and consequenced. So I'd be hesitant to say that any of our numbers would reflect dramatic change for our students.
Speaking from personal experience within my family, I think for African-American kids or other marginalized kids, that they feel it, they hear it, they're impacted by it at the elementary and into the middle school level. At that point, they either become just numb to it or they're navigating it on themselves without involving other people. So I'm not sure. You know, I think what I'm trying to say is that at the different levels of where the kids are in their educational process, you'll have a different type of incident perhaps being reported. And if you're black or you're gay or marginalized in some other way, by the time you hit your sophomore year of high school, imagine most of them are dealing with it individually, unless it's really egregious.
It could very well be.
Yeah.
What's kind of the peer culture around instances? I mean, if someone says something that is arguably harassment or certainly inappropriate or, you know, is targeting someone for gender or sexuality or race, do you feel there's... Do people call them on that? Is there a student self-performance where it's like, hey, that's not cool? Or is it the other way? Or does a lot of it still happen where people aren't around?
Well, we're not in every friend group or peer group at our school, obviously. So my answer is going to be, I think we... My peer group, I can only speak from my experience, which is a good experience. I feel like if somebody says something that targets somebody else's identity, we feel comfortable calling them out or going to an adult if it's egregious. But then I'm also very privileged, so maybe I'm not observing everything.
I have a pointed question that pertains to some of these issues. I heard from a parent in the past week, and she was okay with me sharing this experience, that, and this is a family that supports gender-neutral bathrooms. And her daughter's in the middle school. And apparently, her daughter is avoiding going to some bathrooms because there are eighth grade boys in the bathroom. Do we have non-gender-neutral bathrooms in the middle school? This is like a general question that I don't know the answer to. Okay.
We certainly do. And we also have several single-stall bathrooms throughout the school.
Okay.
So yes, there's one in the main floor, the middle floor of that building is a gender-specific. There's a gender-specific bathroom. And then there's a single bathroom, two on the middle floor and one on the top floor.
Great.
Local to all kids.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I was going to ask a clarifying question along the same lines. Emma, you refer to gender-neutral bathrooms. And then you refer to women feeling safe. And I just wanted to check that. Like, we're thinking of gender-neutral bathrooms as pieces of progress. Are we having situations where women don't feel safe using the gender-neutral bathrooms? Or is that...
I think that would be a good question for me to ask my peers about because I do not know.
I mean, I have two daughters in the high school, as you well.
Yeah.
But, and I haven't heard that from either of them. And I feel like they said some... I don't know if they even know which bathrooms are assigned gender and which aren't. But yeah, if you ask around...
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yes. So my superintendent report was all about snow days.
We started early.
We started early, yes, because it's my first year of superintendency. So why wouldn't we start early?
That's your snowfall, we remember. Just special for you.
Right, no, just for me. So I just wanted to make sure, I know as board members, you are probably asked about snow days quite a bit and how they are called, or I'm guessing anyway. So I wanted to make sure that you all had the process for just how those snow days are called in front of you so you can refer to. So I know Ryan had some questions. Do you want to pose them publicly, Ryan, or...
Right. I think at the end of one of our last board meetings, we were expecting snow soon. And we talked about what's different in the communities. And, you know, in the 706 process and that transition area, like we theoretically said, you know, maybe we can have some schools closed, some schools open. But then it sounds like that wasn't necessarily possible. So it was really just kind of how does that decision fall out across the district of...
I think it's...
So I think it's possible. I think it's tricky. And I want to avoid it at all costs or as many costs as I possibly can. The reason why is we currently have 15 students from Roxbury who come into Montpelier. So if we, let's just say hypothetically, we close Roxbury, which I would assume that Roxbury transportation from Roxbury to Montpelier is too safe or is too unsafe for those kids to travel. We're making that statement. So they don't come to school.
Right.
If that happened, there's a few things with that. One, how are we getting them their education for the day? Because their peers are getting learning for the day, right? So that's a conundrum, right? Which isn't a huge deal for one day, but it is if it starts talking about three, four, or five days. And then you start mixing, what if they don't make the student days that they have to make for this day? What if they don't get to 178 days? And then we have two teacher contracts now, but we'll have one teacher contract. So I... Some teachers will need more work dates according to contract than others. It just gets really sticky fast. So I would like to keep it as one district as much as humanly possible.
I think I shared with you also, the last couple of years, Roxbury has had less snow days.
Less snow days been Montpelier, yeah.
I really don't see it being an issue, but it has come up.
I know.
And it's been vast.
Yeah.
It's like, how does that play out across the district in the future?
And luckily so far, while the first snow day, the major draw was Roxbury. I think Montpelier probably could have gone with a delay, but Roxbury couldn't have. It was just, it was cleaner to do the whole thing. The second time, when I made the call, I said to Michelle, I think that UES was the one who didn't have power when I made the call around snow days. So, and it turned out that Roxbury was impassable that day anyway. So, and much of Montpelier was as well. So it turned out easier for that day. But it's not an easy... I'd like to keep it as we're one district. And that's pretty common across the state. That's not unique to us, that it would be one district.
So you commented, it's in your report, how you decide. And I have it in front of me. If somebody watching wanted to know where they could find this, where would they find it?
Superintendent, it's in the board packet, online. And I can do a quick rundown. So very quickly, I'm up quite early that morning and I'm talking to Brian and Lauren, Ryan here in Montpelier and Lauren in Roxbury about what the roads are looking like. I even had, I had some people from the police station the last snow day emailing me as well with power outage information. So it's about 4:45 when everybody starts talking to each other. All the regional superintendents are on emails. One common email thread talking about what they're hearing from their road crew, which is really helpful because we share roads across districts. And so it's really helpful to hear what other people are saying. And when, once I start hearing what other people are saying and what my road crew's saying in our two communities, that's when I make the decision. It's really based on Brian and Lauren saying, yeah, we can get these roads cleared up or we can't.
And Brian and Lauren are...
Are the road, the people who are out looking at the roads. Yep. So it's, I make the call, but it's really not my call. But yeah, that's, that was pretty much the superintendent's report because probably that was what was on my mind when I was writing it for the snow days and I wanted to make sure you all had that, that information of how those days are called. And I can say to the public that I do take requests. If you want me to give any student expectations on my next call, I take requests. So if anybody wants to stick one in there for their particular kid, just let me know.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, perfect. So I think it's... Much time.
All right. Before I get started, does anybody need a hard copy?
Not unless it's changed.
This is kind of hard to read.
It is not.
Can you hear Bridget?
Bridget, that was set to you. All right. Well, while they're working, I'm going to go ahead and get started. By first off saying, I wanted to show some appreciation for my colleagues who are all supporting me from right over here. They make building a budget as easy as it possibly can be. It's not an easy thing to do, but we have a great team. And we work together on staffing. And they put together their budget input and send it to me. And they always give me all the information that I need to be able to put these slides together. So I appreciate the work of my colleagues. I will throw a couple of caveats out. One, I mentioned to a few of you, I have just driven back from a two-day conference talking about statewide financial system and chart of accounts, which is not exactly the most uplifting two days of my life. So I may not be at the top of my game, but I'm going to give it a college try. The other caveat is, this is 27 slides. I've got 30 minutes. Ain't going to happen. But I will do as good as possible at staying on time. What would help is if, as I'm going through this, if you're coming up with questions, if you could jot them down and hit me at the end. Potentially, I will answer the question as we go along. So it might save some time there as well.
Yeah. Just two quick comments on that. One, we're starting five minutes early, so there will be time. Second, we have a discussion budgeted in the time. And third, we thus far have a relatively low public turnout, so we'll probably have even more time to relay a couple of questions.
And for those of you who have gone through this before, you know, this first budget presentation is the most challenging one because we go through everything. After this first one, it goes a lot faster because we're only talking about changes and things like that. So strap in and we'll get going. Here's just a quick outline of what I'm going to be covering. So I don't need to talk about much here, except the second to the last bullet there. Tax rates may change dramatically. I'm looking like a genius because they already have. I'm looking like a genius because they already have. I will be briefing you on some new numbers based on new data that's already come out. And there will be new data that keeps coming out. So we'll go over that and we will update as briefings go along. So for context, obviously, we focus a lot on staffing because that's where the majority of the budget is, salaries and benefits. So we talk about staffing as a group and make decisions as a group. We also obviously talk a lot about student needs because after all, that's why we're here. In the back of our minds, we're sensitive to the, to tax implications for the community. So we always are thinking about, are we really needing to add this and add that? And, you know, what are some potential offsets? The last thing under themes is we, last year, we added a capital plan into the budget and incorporated that in. This year, it's still there, but we are probably gonna have it as a separate fund. So it would be a separate article, and it, those funds would then be able to roll over from year to year. Some state factors. Internet sales tax has filled the ed fund shortfall. So while that may not be good news to us individually, it was great news to the ed fund. And as a result, the dollar yield that is set at a state level didn't need to go down. It actually is going to go up. And, and what that means is if the yield goes up, the tax rates go down. So that was very good news. Health rates, on the not-so-good news, are increasing eleven point eight percent, which is a large increase for the second year in a row. That has been offset by us reducing our assumption for how much people are gonna utilize their health reimbursement arrangements. So we're no longer assuming that everybody is gonna use one hundred percent of their health reimbursement money. The other thing that's kind of good news is there's no clawback. If you remember, two years ago, the state took money from us and said, well, they didn't take money from us. Instead of giving us all our money, they held back some and said, well, with these new health plans, you should be saving money. So we're not gonna give you all the money that we planned on giving you. That happened last year, it happened this year, it's no longer gonna happen next year. So that's sixty-five thousand dollars that we don't have to worry about covering in the bottom line. Local factors, you can read them all there. You know, we, as a merged district, got an eight-cent tax incentive last year that drops two cents every year. In essence, what it means is our tax rate goes up two cents every year now that we've cashed in on the eight cents. Enrollment, we'll talk about later on, we'll talk about staffing. The budget does include, as of right now, additional busing for Main Street Middle School. There are a few different capacity building initiatives within the budget, some relating to foreign language, social emotional learning, equity. This is the first year that we had to absorb the bond principal, the four-point-nine billion dollar bond. We paid interest last year, this year we have to pay the principal for the first time. As a result, we knew that was coming, so in FY nineteen, we had a lot of one-time project money in there that we knew we could cut out to absorb that cost this year. We did reduce a lot of those one-time project costs. We didn't go all the way down to the level that we initially thought, but we did come down significantly, I think a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from nineteen to twenty. To try to make up for that difference that we didn't make up, you know, we were gonna come down to like two fifty and we only came down to one sixty-seven. So to make up for that difference, we were proposing to use some fund balance as a revenue source in the FY twenty budget. That way, it would really basically bring us all the way down to where we initially thought we would be on one-time project costs. That's something we can talk about later, whether we should use fund balance or should not. Reduce tuition costs, that's tuition in a couple of areas. The big one is Roxbury ninth through twelfth students. The amount that we need to budget for next year is significantly less than the amount we budgeted this year. One reason is because we actually are coming in under budget this year. There are kids that have decided to go to tech schools, so we have to pay tech tuition, not high school tuition. There are kids that are living with a different parent in a different town, so instead of paying tuition, they're now resident students at Northfield or Berry or U thirty-two. So we had a lot less kids this year, and that translates into a lot less kids next year, too. Also, private pre-K is lower, outside placement costs are lower based on student needs. The unknowns, equalized pupil count, you know that that has a lot to do with tax rates. Last year, we got initial pupil count on December twelfth. I'm not optimistic that we're gonna get a pupil count on December twelfth. And if we do, I'm not optimistic that it's gonna be correct. There are a lot of problems with the statewide longitudinal data system. So people aren't getting good data to the state, which means they're not gonna be able to give us good pupil counts, I don't think. As an example, Burlington, South Burlington don't have data in. Those are two big districts, and without that data, it makes it hard to think that we're gonna get an accurate pupil count. So that may be an unknown for a while, and when we do get a number, it may not hold. So we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Dollar yield and non-residential tax rate, the Tax Commissioner letter did come out. I got it Monday, I've been out of town, so your briefing isn't updated, but I will tell you what the impact is. That does still have to be set by law, though. So it's probably as good as it's gonna get until after Town Meeting Day, but it's not set by law yet. Common level of appraisal, I think we got that around the middle of December last year, so that should be out soon. I did make some assumptions, hopefully pretty close, maybe a little conservative, but we'll see. Revenues, and when I say revenues, I'm talking about non-tax revenues, which you'll see in the tax rate calculation how that plays out. There are some unknowns there, special education, some of those revenues, the AOE gives us, we haven't gotten that yet. Small schools grant for Roxbury, we haven't gotten that number yet. We should get those probably around the middle of the month. Transportation aid, the last two years, I haven't gotten a number in time for the budget, so I have an estimate plugged in, which is probably gonna be as good as it gets. Career center six semester average, that's for kids who go to tech centers. And we don't pay a tuition like we do for kids who go to a high school. Career center tuition is based on a three-year average to try to level out any spikes that you might see. So when you pay for tech tuition, you're paying for an average of the number of kids over the past three years. I don't have that count yet. It shouldn't swing dramatically because it is a three-year average. I made an assumption of eleven kids, I think this year we're at nine point nine-nine, so maybe it'll come down. Health reimbursement arrangement, I mentioned that a little earlier. So if we give, say, a single teacher twenty-one hundred dollars to go against health costs, in FY nineteen, we assumed they were gonna use that full twenty-one hundred dollars. In FY twenty, we're assuming that as a district, those people who are getting twenty-one hundred dollars in total will average about ninety percent of that twenty-one hundred dollars. They won't all spend every dime of it. That's the assumption. We still don't even have a full year under our belt, so next year we can make a more informed decision, but I think ninety percent is probably safe. This slide at the top there, just as a quick preview of the numbers, and it compares FY eighteen. Remembering FY eighteen was two separate districts, Roxbury and Montpelier, kinda added together as best we could. Nineteen was our first unified budget, and twenty is what we're proposing. You'll see that the, about the middle of that chart, you'll see the total budget is twenty-four million oh thirty. That's about a two-and-a-half percent increase over FY nineteen. And just as a comparison point, FY nineteen was an eight percent increase over eighteen. So that is pretty good. Non-tax revenues are estimated, hopefully conservatively estimated. If that number goes up and spending goes down, tax rates go down. Education spending right now is just over twenty point one million. That represents a three-point-two percent increase over nineteen as compared to a six-point-five percent increase from eighteen to nineteen. You may remember that the board gave guidance to try to limit the increase to a four percent increase, and we're at three point two, which was a very good surprise. And I will tell you that we did not go back to administration and everybody else and say, you have a target of X. We built this budget and it just came out this way. So there weren't artificial constraints. Everybody knew the challenges that were going on, so I think people were realistic. But nobody was artificially constrained when they built their budgets. Equalized pupil count is probably the biggest unknown, and I talked about that. You'll see right now, I'm going from twelve oh five, or twelve twenty-five down to twelve twenty. Our pupils, our enrollment is increasing, so you might think that that should go up, and I hope it does, but I'm just not sure. With equalized pupils, it's a very complicated calculation. And then at the very end, there's a statewide equalizing ratio that gets applied, and I have no idea what that ratio might be, so you never know until the end what's gonna happen to your numbers. I would hope twelve twenty is conservative. If that goes up, spending for pupil goes down, tax rate goes down. And hopefully, we'll know a little bit more in the coming weeks. We instituted a capital plan last year at two hundred and fifty. We're proposing a capital plan at two sixty for FY twenty, and this time it would be a separate article and a separate fund. So enrollment projections, just to kinda, if you haven't seen this slide before, K through four does not include Roxbury. And the reason why is because if we rolled them in from a good class size analysis, it would really skew the numbers. So K through four is just the Montpelier schools. Actually, this whole thing is Montpelier schools because Roxbury students are feeding into Montpelier schools in, starting in fifth grade. So, or, yeah, fifth grade, sixth grade?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade. So fifth through twelfth actually includes Roxbury students as they grandparent, as the grandparenting wears off and they come into our schools. It's hard to see, but there's a darker kind of square that gets bigger, or rectangle that gets bigger every year. That's as students are transitioning in. So in FY twenty, or twenty eighteen, nineteen, you see fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are in the middle school. Next year, that adds to ninth grade, the next year, there's tenth graders, eleventh graders, twelfth graders. So in FY twenty-three, all Roxbury students in grades five through twelve will be in either Main Street Middle School or Montpelier High School. So that's a little bit about the chart. Two things to kinda call out, you might see kindergarten numbers and think those are kinda hokey, they're going all over the place. The model is based on birth rate data, and it's a little smoke and mirrors to try to figure out what's gonna happen four or five years after a kiddo is born. So don't put a whole lot of stock in the kindergarten column, you know, those do change a lot. Especially, you'll see in FY twenty-three, fifty-five kids, I'm sure that's a low number, but it's just how the model kicked it out based on birth data. The other thing to notice is at the very bottom, you'll see, we still have increasing enrollment every year, going from one thousand seventy-two projected, or actual this year, up to twelve twelve in twenty twenty-three. Some of that is because we have additional Roxbury kids coming in, but one year's worth each year is not making up these numbers. I mean, you're talking, what, five to eight kids? And you're seeing increases of nineteen, sixty-four, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, nineteen. So that's more than just Roxbury kids coming into Montpelier schools. I do think that after twenty twenty-three, we should start seeing some kind of leveling off. But increased enrollment across the board. This slide shows kind of how that translates into class size analysis. Even though we have increasing enrollment, we are not proposing adding any classroom teachers until probably FY twenty-two. So the twenty-one, twenty-two year is, the first year, you see a red highlight in a cell. If it's red highlighted, that means that is at the point where we now are over our max class size. In FY nineteen, or FY twenty and FY twenty-one, you'll see some yellow. That means we're getting close to max class size, we're within one student. So we are getting close in a few areas, especially sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade in the next couple of years. And then in FY twenty-two, six, seven, eight, and then you start seeing it in the high school. So we will have to add, but we're only talking about probably one or two teachers over this span of time as the increased pupil count goes up. So I don't think spending for pupil is gonna go through the roof. I think both are gonna go kind of in the same line. Roxbury, my apologies to Roxbury, this is not a highly complex slide with a very difficult algorithm. All we're looking at is basically assuming that there's five fifth graders, or five first graders, there's gonna be five second graders next year. The numbers just aren't there to try to do a complicated model. But you can see we're looking at like twenty-nine to thirty-two kids is pretty stable in Roxbury K four. That isn't a typo, if you notice that eleven kindergartners going to eight first graders, that is true. Three kiddos moved out, I double-checked that. But other than that, usually you have pretty stable transition community. So staffing, there's only one page of staffing adjustments that we're proposing this year. And on this one page, half of these are really shifts, they're not really increases or decreases. At the district level, we are proposing, and we've talked about this before, a human resources coordinator. So that would be an additional full-time person coming in. If you're familiar with the district, you know the workload has gone up. There's Family Medical Leave Act issues, there's Fair Labor Standard Act issues, there's new health plans and HRAs that are coming on board. And then next year, you've got statewide negotiation for health plans, so that's still gonna be changing. So, and there's a lot of work that we need to do with job descriptions and that kind of thing. If you're familiar with the district, you know there's three people that basically do a piece of this job. So it's not real efficient, especially from an employee or a consumer's perspective. This would really help centralize that, help be more efficient. And it would also free up some time so that somebody can start focusing a little more on transportation coordination as we add more busing into this district. Custodial, that's a decrease of a halftime position. It's not a real, it's not a cut, it's a vacancy. We had a halftime person that we added in the FY nineteen budget. We haven't filled that, and we think we can go without filling it. So it's not a cut, it's, it's a cut to the budget, but not a cut to people. The next two lines are those shifts that I talked about. Shifting partial FTEs from title funds, from consolidated federal grant money into our local money. And you do that whenever you wanna make sure that if title funds go away, these people don't go away. So I certainly wouldn't wanna see point one seven of Mike Berry go away because we lose title funds. So we wanna shift that and make sure those are sustainable positions that we don't end up having to cut at some point. That takes you down to union, and for union, we have an interventionist coach that's a shift from title funds to general fund budget. You may wonder why it's even in here. It's in here because it's not an increase to the expense budget, but it's an increase to ed spending because you don't have an offsetting revenue if we take it from federal grants to local budget. So that's why it's in here. The shift under Union Elementary School is needed because Union Elementary School won't qualify for title funds next year. So we don't want that position to go away, the only way to keep it is to shift it. The last position that we're adding is also at union, it's a social emotional learning coordinator. Early on in this prog, in this process, I think I told the board we were thinking about adding another special educator. Instead of doing that, we're adding a social emotional learning coordinator. And that would basically be to help institute a model to integrate kids back into classrooms. And that would help avoid costly outside placements. But more importantly, it would, it would focus on teaching social and self-regulation skills so that we can get those kiddos back into the classroom because we all know that what's most important is high-quality first instruction in the classroom. So this would be, if you're following along with MTSS, this would be MTSS level three to get you back to level one. And we think it's very important work to do. So now, moving on, we get into numbers which I love. So we're gonna talk about expenses by both program and category. And when I say program, I mean like general education, special education, co-curricular. When I say category, I mean the type of expense, like salaries, benefits, tuition. We'll start off by looking at it both ways. Couple of briefings in, we'll probably just look, focus in on one or the other to save some time. Couple briefings in, we'll probably just look, focus in on one or the other to save some time and confusion. So as we do this look, I just wanted to point out on this chart again, the number that we're looking at is this twenty-four oh thirty-four forty-six. That's what I'm gonna be tracking to on the next five or six slides. So first, by program. Nearly sixty percent of the budget relates entirely to direct instruction, meaning general education, special education, career-centered tuition. And it would be even higher if you rolled in, say, speech into the equation, if you'd broken out separately. Most of the programs that you can see, hoping, hopefully you can read everything from there. Most of these programs are pretty much self-explanatory. A couple to maybe call out are buildings and grounds, you may wonder what's in there. Well, the capital fund is part of buildings and grounds. Utilities, electricity, heating oil, that's in buildings and grounds. Safety, that includes our school resource officer, it includes bus aides, crossing guards. Principal offices slash special services administration, that's your principal's budget and, you know, the administrative offices of the principals, it's the special ed director's administrative budget. That's where that is. Fund transfer is another one that you might not know what that means. Fund transfer for us is one thing and one thing only. It's the money that we have to transfer over to food service to cover any deficit. That's the only piece of food service you see in our budget because, other than that, food service is an enterprise, they have expenses, revenues that offset. The only thing that you see in this budget is what we supplement to food service to make sure that they are breaking even completely. The next chart is really just to show I have skills at building charts. This is just a bar chart that shows from year to year what's going on. So you can see increases and decreases just visually. I'm not gonna spend any time on this because the next slide is the one that gives you the words to explain why the increases or decreases are happening. So, it's a lot of words, I'm not gonna read them all to you, but I'm gonna try to hit some of the highlights and some of maybe the more complicated things. And I'll start with the most difficult one to explain. In general education in FY nineteen, there was a hundred and seventy thousand dollar expense. There was a transfer out from our funds in the general fund to Triple E, which is preschool, special education preschool. The reason we had to do that is because Triple E was considered a separate fund and it never had nearly enough revenue to cover expenses. So we would show a transfer out in general education. We no longer have to do that because Triple E is really just part of the general fund now as part of this statewide uniformed charter accounts. So that expense goes away. So that's part of the reason why there's a decrease in general education. On the flip side, it shows up as an increase in special ed because special education used to get that as a revenue, kind of a transfer in to cover Triple E costs. And they're not gonna get that anymore. So it's not really a big swing, it's just a swing between general ed and special ed. You would expect special ed to be a decrease, you can see it's like a one percent increase. It's, it really is a decrease in special ed, other than that dynamic of this transfer in, transfer out, that we don't have to do anymore. So in general ed, some of the other stuff, tuition, the Roxbury tuition, tuition for Roxbury students that are nine twelve is much lower, as I referenced earlier. Outside placement costs, well, that's special ed, so pre-K tuition is lower. Another dynamic that you're gonna notice is that we pulled out transportation costs from some of these areas and booked them under transportation. The reason for that is there's a separate function called transportation. Anything to do with bussing should be there. It wasn't. Field trips were under general education, even though the bussing piece of that probably should've been down under transportation. We fixed that in this budget, so some of those shifts are going on. You'll see that in general ed, you'll see it in co-curricular and athletics as well, a shift of funds or requirements. Special ed, I talked about the fact that it would be a big decrease if not for this transfer in that they're no longer getting. The reason why it would be a big decrease is outside placement costs are way down based on student needs. It's always a crap shoot, you have to go by what the student needs are. Some years it's gonna go up, this year it happens to go down, based on what we're seeing. Contracted services is also going down for things like OTPT, autism services, those kinds of things. And once again, it's purely based on student needs and what we saw as we built a service plan, as Mary built a service plan. Career-centered tuition, that's shown up about a fifteen percent increase for two reasons. One, I'm assuming there's gonna be a little bit of an uptick in the six semester average. And two, the two tech centers we typically send kids to, Central Vermont and Randolph, I think it is, their tuition we anticipate is gonna go up. In actuality, that number's gonna go up even higher the next time you see this presentation because Central Vermont gave me a number one day and the next day they gave me a number that was a thousand dollars higher than the number the day before. So that's gotta be rolled into here. But I'm hoping that the six semester average number is lower so that higher tuition hopefully will be offset by a lower number of students. Co-curricular and athletics, even though we added some advisors for co-curriculars like Equity Alliance, Racial Justice, and the Conversation, which you just mentioned earlier, the cost came down, and the reason why it came down is because we shifted all the transportation, all the bussing costs out of this line and put it under transportation. So there really is an increase in co-curriculars and athletics, but it looks like it's a decrease because we shifted bussing costs out. Some other things to point out, student support. The reason for the increase there mostly is that social emotional learning coordinator that I talked about. Staff support, there's a fairly big percentage increase there. The big drivers are the world language immersion study that we're gonna do. And there's also, not an exciting one, but phones has to go up by a significant amount because we used to get E-rate money to offset the cost of phones, like a discount. Phones are no longer considered reimbursable through the E-rate process. So we have to cover the full cost of phones now, so that's another driver for that increase. Another one is equity stipends that we have in place. And I might talk more about that later, but really we're talking about a systematic way to build capacity through kind of a train-to-trainer model. Instead of just bringing somebody in to do a PD, you know, event, we're going to have, say, three or four, I think three maybe, folks that are trained on equity, that become kind of the champions district-wide, that will train other people, that will basically systematize equity professional development for the district. Let's see what else. Superintendent and school board is pretty flat. The reason there is, I took credit for this in the business office last year, so I'll give Libby credit for it this year, new hire savings. So thank you, Libby. Business services, the big increase there is related to, that's where we plugged in the HR coordinator. Building and grounds, big decrease there, as I mentioned. We inflated one-time program costs in the FY nineteen budget, fully intending to back that out this year. We did back it out, not quite as much as we initially planned. Andrew looked at requirements with principals. We didn't wanna bring it all the way down to, you know, prior, to prior levels before the merger, but we did bring it down significantly. With the hope that maybe we can bring it down the rest of the way next year, but we'll see what the needs of the facility are. Safety, not a big dollar amount, but a good percentage increase. That's because we're doing a resupply of things like cones fencing, things that Andrew's taken an inventory of that we've wanted resupply. Transportation, a large increase there for two reasons. One, as I mentioned, field trips, co-curricular, bussing costs are now put down in this line. Of course, the other big one is adding bussing for the middle school. Debt service, I talked about the fact that this is the first year that we're gonna have to pay that principal on that four point nine million dollar bond. So that's a big uptick this one year that we have to absorb. From here on out, you won't see that, it'll actually drop a little bit each year. Fund transfers, not a huge dollar amount, but percentage-wise, a huge increase in food service to cover potential deficit. The reason there, I think everybody supports the idea of trying to be, trying to make a more livable wage for food service employees. And also, we're kind of infamous for having just under the number of hours to get benefits. And we don't wanna do business that way. So if we need somebody for six hours a day, then we're gonna hire them for six hours a day and we're gonna give them the benefits that they should get for six hours a day. So we're anticipating because of that, we're gonna see maybe a bigger deficit for the first year or two. As Jim, you know, continues on down the road, you know, maybe we'll see some efficiencies be able to be driven from that. Maybe we'll see higher participation rates, but it's an initial investment that we feel it's important to make. I wish I had a commercial break.
You're doing fantastic, you are ridiculously impressive, Grant, keep going.
Just need to take some oxygen. So now expenses by category. So now we're looking at it, as I said, salaries, benefits, that. So if you look at the numbers, you'll see that nearly seventy-two percent of the budget is salaries and benefits. So that's why obviously we spend a lot of money agonizing over staffing models. Professional services, I'm gonna give you some examples of what some of these things are because you might not be able to translate. So professional services are things like OTPT, autism services, psyche valves. The foreign language immersion study would be in here. Professional development, audit, legal. What am I missing? Some flexible pathway services to get into instruction. So if there's virtual learning or online courses, that would be in here. Visiting artists, those kinds of things are professional services. Purchase services are things like repair and maintenance. So when we renovate a classroom, that kinda thing. The capital plan is all in there. Copiers, that kinda thing is in purchase services. Contracted services is your bussing, travel and conference expenses, phones, printing, postage, advertising, property and liability insurance. Tuition, that seems like a no-brainer, but just to show what all that encompasses, it's tuition for Roxbury kids that are grandparented in, private preschool, it's outside placements. Am I missing anything? I think that's, oh, tech tuition is also part of that. And then you, we've talked about the fund transfer that might be one that you wouldn't have recognized before today. The bar chart is showing, you know, things that you might wanna visually see and then go to the next page to see what the words are to back it up. So for example, salaries is an increase, tuition is a decrease. Those things are all explained on the next chart. Most of these things I've already discussed, it's just they're in a different bucket. So now, when I talk about those positions, they're all in, under the salary line instead of HR's under business office and, you know, the different categories. So now, all those positions are under salaries that I talked about. Health insurance, we broke that out separately because it's a big piece of benefits. I talked about the health rates going way up, but ninety percent utilization of HRAs, that assumption brings it back down some, so it's about where you'd hope to be at, about three percent. Benefits, less health, so we're talking about social security, teacher retirement, federal grant assessment, municipal retirement. So for example, the HR coordinator would most likely fall under VEMR, so we have to add that in. When we talk about teacher retirement, you may think, well, we don't pay for VISTERS. Well, we do for some. If we have a new teacher, there's an assessment amount that we have to pay for teachers who are new to VISTERS to help make sure VISTERS stays healthy. So for a new teacher, we do have to pay an assessment amount of about fifteen hundred dollars. The other time we pay for VISTERS is when we're paying for somebody using federal funds. So if somebody's position is funded by IDEA B or a title grant, we have to pay VISTERS from that grant. Which hurts, because this year it's fifteen point one seven five, I think, percent? That's a good chunk of the money that you're getting, you have to put towards VISTERS. Next year, that percentage goes all the way up to nineteen point, I think, one two five. So nineteen percent is a huge amount of money that you're paying towards VISTERS, but...
And VISTERS for the people listening is?
The Vermont State Teacher Retirement System, so it's teachers' retirement. And it's only those two pieces that come out of this budget. The rest is budgeted and paid for at the state level. Let's see what else. Professional services is down due to lower special ed services that we anticipate. Purchase services is down because of the one-time project costs that we pulled out of facilities. Contract services is largely due to adding bussing for middle school. Tuition, I think I beat that horse, it's grandparented tuition for Roxbury, outside placements, private pre-K. The private pre-K, just to put a number on that, we budgeted for a hundred and twenty kids at private preschools, times three thousand something dollars. We're at about a hundred, and it seems like that's where we're gonna stay. So we're dropping that level down, that's why private preschool is down. The rate is certainly going up, but instead of a hundred and twenty, we're thinking a hundred is probably reasonable. So I'm not being overly conservative for once in my life. Supplies is about where you'd expect it to be, a little bit of a shift from equipment because we're trying to make sure that unless you're buying something that is, you know, significant dollar amount as a unit cost, you shouldn't call it an equipment item, you should put it in supplies. Utilities, that's a pleasant surprise that it's only about a one point seven percent increase. Electricity is pretty flat. We looked at what we budgeted in electricity for nineteen and what we think we need for twenty, it's pretty level. So, you know, we were able to kind of offset some of the other increases there. Equipment, not a huge dollar amount, but a huge percentage increase. And a lot of that is because a little bit of sloppy work last year when we shifted furnishings, furniture costs, we shifted it from the facilities budget into the principals' budget. And I wasn't closely watching to make sure everybody caught that, and so we missed it a few places. Like, the high school here is trying to backfill for furniture because we missed budgeting that. And so we put it back in here, so that's why it looks like there's a big increase. At Union Elementary, I think we only budgeted like eight hundred dollars in FY nineteen, and typically that's seventy-five hundred dollars in there. So those are added in there. You also see that there's some high school PE equipment that we're adding in. You know, we're gonna have a better space in the fitness area with the bond. We don't wanna have, you know, cut a ribbon and then have people walk in and see treadmills that are held together with duct tape. So we have some treadmills, we have some squat racks that are built into this budget. Let's see, dues and fees, it's, it's small dollars. I have the reasons in the comments block. Principal and interest, talked about that, it's four point nine million dollar bond, principal. Fund transfers, we talked about food service, so there you have it. Moving on to revenues, there's still a lot of unknowns, I highlighted those in yellow. Actually, I got a little sloppy because there's at least one other one that should be yellow. Tech on behalf should be yellow because I don't know that until I know the six semester average. So I made some educated guesses at these items that are in yellow, but we should get better numbers with potential exclusion of transportation aid because I just don't know if I'm gonna get a better number. If you, if you're looking at education spending, that's basically where we balance revenues with expenses. And that's what's gonna drive what the tax rate looks like. Everything other than those top two lines are considered non-tax revenues. So whenever I say that you have your expenses minus your non-tax revenues, everything on that list except those first two lines are considered non-tax revenues. So if these numbers go up, that means I'm subtracting out more money from your total expense, which means your education spending is lower, spending pupils is lower, tax rate is lower. So hopefully, these numbers all go in the upward direction. Special ed intensive, that's basically, if you've been around for a while, you know that when you have money spent towards special ed requirements, you get about a fifty-six percent reimbursement from the state. So that number is basically looking at what we're spending times about fifty-six percent. Some of the other special ed numbers are going to depend on factors that the AOE comes up with and sends back. Just hitting on a few other items, you'll see a couple like IDEA B, title funds, EPSDT, and Medicaid. All of those, the... All of those, the revenue amounts will match exactly an expense amount. So if I'm going to spend X number of dollars towards social workers using Medicaid funds, the revenue is exactly that same amount. So those offset each other. Same thing for, like I said, Medicaid, title funds. If you skip down to tuition, that is tuition revenue now. We're looking at who people are paying us to have kids come here. That would be pretty much level with the exception of, we've now included in there when we have to charge for special ed excess costs. So if a student comes here, we charge X number of dollars, $16,000 for tuition. But if they're receiving additional services, we also charge for that. If it's above and beyond, we will charge for that. We didn't use the budget for that and we're trying to be more, fully encompassing all these revenues. So that's why there's an increase there. Other than that, we're pretty flat. I'm assuming that the kids that we have here that are tuitioned in are going to stay here. It may come in higher if we get additional kids next year, but I don't want to count on that. Balance forward, so down near the bottom, balance forward, $87,500. That's what I initially plugged in because basically when Andrew and I looked at one-time project costs, I was hopeful that we were going to be $87,500 lower than what we came in at. When we did hit that target, I figured, no problem, we'll push in fund balance revenue so it basically is like we came all that way down. The problem with doing that then is next year, when you take out that 87.5, it's like increasing your expenses. So next year, we would absolutely have to take out that 87.5 in one-time costs if we're going to take out this revenue so that both go out and there's no impact. If the tax rate's looking good, we may decide not to use any fund balance there. That way, next year, we can bring down one-time project costs a little bit more and we don't have to reduce any revenues. So that would help us out to offset that two cent tax incentive that we're going to lose out on. So the 87.5 is something I'd like you all to kind of put in the back of your head so that by the end of the budget, you're telling me, yes, put it in, no, don't put it in, or maybe we're going to make a different number, like 50,000, or call it in the middle. I think it's probably prudent to see how some other numbers come out first, like our equalized pupil count and our CLA. And we may decide that, hey, the tax rate's looking pretty good, so let's not throw this in here this year, let's shoot that bullet next year. IEP Medicaid is one last thing to point out. You'll see that that's a fairly big increase percentage-wise. You know, Mary and her administrative assistant Spooky have been on a great job putting in the Medicaid reimbursement and getting Medicaid money in. And we get to roll that over from year to year and we've built up a pretty good amount of money. We use that to pay for 25% of each social worker. We think we can bump that up to 30%, which then reduces the amount that we're paying out of the general fund. And we think if we just do a 5% increment, we can sustain that for several years. So that's why that revenue is going up and that helps us out on the general fund side. Capital plan, now we're rolling downhill, this will go pretty fast. This is about 1% of the overall budget, so $260,000 is what we said we were going to do for FY20. And what we said we were going to do with it was renovate two bathrooms at Main Street Middle School. So that's still in there, that's still what we say we're going to do for '20. The other years, don't get too excited about. I think you should take comfort in the fact that there is a plan, a multiple-year plan, but we have time to tweak those numbers and those requirements. And Andrew, I mean, he's done a great job jumping in, but I think as he's got some more time under his belt, he may decide next year, I think I might want to change this around a little bit. We have time to do that. The only thing we're locked into is what we say we're going to do in '20. So if there's questions about this later, Andrew's here, he can address them, but I want to work through the rest of these slides. The tax rates, I don't want you to get too excited about these because things are changing and can change dramatically. What you should take from this is on the left side, you can follow the math signs. This tells you how the tax rates are calculated. If you didn't know, this gives you the math behind it, but the factors are going to change. The dollar yield, as many of you know, the dollar yield, the tax commissioner came out with a number and instead of 10 to 20, the number is 10666. So if you want to jot that down, the dollar yield number or the tax commissioner's recommendation is 10,666. What that means is if you go all the way to the bottom and you see that 1.729 under Montpelier, that number would be 1.653. That's a huge drop, just based on one factor changing. As a matter of fact, that's like seven out of 12 cents or something like that, eight out of 12 cents. If you're in Roxbury, don't get too excited, your number didn't change. The reason why is because as you're getting tax incentives for merger, Roxbury's tax rate can't drop by more than 5% from one year to the next. So that equalized rate of 1.654, it can't be lower than that. We could cut our budget by $5 million, Roxbury's tax rate is still going to be that number. Conversely, we could add $1 million to the tax rate, or to the expense budget, and it probably wouldn't be enough to increase that either. So Roxbury, your tax rate is going to be this, basically no matter what we do in the budget. And I shouldn't say, I mean, things might change, factors might change, equalized pupil numbers, but even if those things change, my guess is that 1.654 is going to be the Roxbury number. Equalized pupil count hopefully will change and make the Montpelier side better. The CLA numbers might change. You can see that for CLA, I've estimated 90% for Montpelier and 100% for Roxbury. Last year, Montpelier's CLA dropped 1.9%. I'm saying it could drop 2.3%. Hopefully that's conservative. If it doesn't drop that much, then the tax rate is better. Roxbury, the CLA dropped 3.9% last year. I'm showing about a 3% drop this year. So that probably will be close, but we'll see in a matter of a couple of weeks. I think that's about it. Once again, if you live in Montpelier, don't get too excited about these numbers yet. I mean, there's a lot still to go as far as unknowns go. This is yet another one. The residential tax rate implications. So this is where we say if you have a house that's worth $100,000, this is the impact. Instead of $128, that number would be 52. And that's just because the dollar yield went up. So it's decreased by a factor of more than two. So the numbers, if you want to write them down as of right now, it's 52, 104, 156 instead of 128, 256 and 304. Obviously Roxbury hasn't changed. Hopefully those will get even better as we go along. Non-residential tax rate, you know, we put it in here because not everybody is a resident, not everybody has residential property. It's nothing to get excited about as far as the budget is concerned though because the school budget has no impact to non-residential tax rate. That is simply a statewide factor divided by CLA. School budget could go up from $10 million or down $10 million, but this won't change. This number on this slide will change though because the tax commissioner is recommending 1.58 instead of 1.6 that's on here. So basically, the tax commissioner is recommending a level rate. So that means instead of 1.778 for Montpelier, it would be 1.756. Instead of 1.6 for Roxbury, it would be 1.58 until we get a better CLA number. The outlook, and this is something we spent a lot of time on last year, I think we should spend a lot of time on it in future budget meetings. The merger incentive, two cents is going to increase every year because we go from eight to six to four to two to zero. Whenever you drop, or whenever you basically lose two cents of incentive, you're really kind of, it's equivalent to maybe adding $250,000 or $300,000 to your budget. So if you want to absorb that two cents, you would have to cut $250,000 to $275,000 to keep that tax rate level estimate. So I'm always thinking about that. So next year, if we want to control the tax rate, where are we going to come up with that? Or at least minimize increases. Enrollment and staffing shouldn't be too much of a challenge because even though we might have some more staffing, I think we can go another, hopefully another year without adding classroom teachers at least, but our enrollment will go up. So spending for pupils should go down and might be able to accommodate some of that dollar amount or that two cents. Some expenditures will decrease. Nine through 12 tuition for phasing out grandfather or grandparented Roxbury students, I thought that was going to be more like 100 or 150,000 every year, but because of this big drop we have from '19 to '20, it's not going to be as much from '20 to '21. Because there's only, say, three juniors this year and they will be seniors next year and then they will go away. That's only three kids times tuition, so it's not as much as you might have thought. So we're looking at maybe a drop of 40, then a drop of 80 and a... One-time facilities projects, we could drop that 87 and a half thousand dollars maybe next year. But if we have fund balance in there that we take away, that's not really going to save you anything. So that's why you need to think about, should we use fund balance this year or not? Transportation aid, we're not going to be able to decrease expenses in transportation, but we'll get more money. Transportation aid is about 40% of your transportation cost, but they go back two years. So your FY18 costs tell you how much money you're going to get in FY20. So in FY21, we should see a bump up because we've added some busing costs this year. In FY22, we'll get a big bump if we add Main Street busing in FY20. So if we add $120,000 worth of busing costs in FY20 for middle school, two years later, we'll get $48,000 more in transportation aid. So if you think about it in the long term, you're not really spending $120,000 on busing at the middle school, you're spending 78. I hate doing math in public, but I think that's right. 72. See, I did it wrong, 72. The other thing to think about is bond expenses. Construction bond expenses by their nature go down every year. But we have a VEMRs bond where we bought into the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System years ago. The cost of that actually goes up every year until it gets paid off. So one's going down, one's going up. The net is, you're going to have a decrease each year, but it's not going to be much, $7,000, $10,000 probably. So last year when we showed this slide, there were some pretty big ticket items that we were going to be able to cut in the next year and the next year. It's not as big, there's still some opportunities there. But I do think after going through this budget once, I think the next time, when we go through the second cut or the third cut, we may be talking about maybe taking out that fund balance revenue because we may need to be able to recoup that in the next year. But at least we're thinking about future years. The summary, as of right now, the increase in that spending is 3.2, which obviously is better than the target that we were set, that the board asked us to set. We didn't constrain anybody, so 3.2 to me is great news. Tax rates, I'm going to wait until the next time when we have some better data to get into that. That, finally, my friends, is all I have for you.
Thank you. So now we're going to take public comment and then we're going to have more discussion. So the members from the public...
Oh, is that why? I can't see the video.
Yeah. We've shipped a little battery mode. Is this yours?
Yeah, battery's dying.
Is there a plug maybe or?
Give me a plug.
So if any members of the public want to comment on the presentation, now's the time. We've got a couple of people out there. Going once, going twice. All right, perfect. So the board discussion, questions or comments for Grant?
Yeah.
So the social-emotional person is not special ed, so no reimbursement? Yes, no?
Yeah, it's not reimbursable because this would service kids that aren't necessarily on an IEP.
Grant, you can put it in the special ed budget.
Well, we put the special ed teacher in.
The teachers?
Yeah, we moved them in.
And I think I backed that with intensive reimbursement amount. So this is a great conversation. So we initially anticipated hiring a special ed teacher, which would be reimbursable and so would impact that special ed intensive reimbursement dollar amount. But when we shifted and decided this might be the better model to go after to actually attack this issue, I had to recalculate kind of what I anticipated for revenues in special ed. So it's not a reimbursable position.
Can you elaborate on why that decision was made?
To do a social-emotional learning because...
Couldn't we accomplish the same goal with a reimbursable position, I guess is my question?
No. Because if you have a child that's struggling with social-emotional issues, they might not be on an IEP. And so if we hired a special ed teacher, they could only service the child that's on the IEP. So we want to make sure that. And there are, social-emotional issues are big right now. And so those, that's kind of where we want to attack things. At least, that's my take on it.
So to be clear, this position is going to have only an impact on one school, right? Not the entire district, not all schools?
Right. This is designed for...
We're starting to target at UES. However, that's not to say that this position couldn't be utilized in the other buildings as well.
So you mentioned two, oh, can I go on? I got a list. You mentioned the shift of title funds. So you're, I understand what you're doing. You're assuring those salaries for those people that are not hitched to the title fund. What are you doing with that?
What are we doing with?
The title fund that you used for those...
We actually are anticipating we might not get quite as much title funds in the future. But we did...
Is it search about stitching boards?
Classic. We looked at the positions that we thought we needed, the highest priority positions. And we also, I think, let me look at the revenue slide. The other thing, we used to show consolidated federal grants as one big bucket and it's really Title I for Title II-A. So I broke that out. But you'll see that we budgeted $401,495 in FY19. And if you add the two numbers in FY20, it's about $36,000 lower. We think we might get less title funds. And that's what they've been threatening for the past five years. So it's prudent to not overdo that because then you lock yourself into positions that end up having to not be able to hire, so. So yeah, there's just a couple fractional pieces that we shifted for the purpose of making sure that we don't have to lose those positions or portions of those positions. The UES one is because we no longer qualify for title funds, so we, if we wanted to keep that position, we had to switch it to general funds.
Roxbury qualifies.
What's that?
Roxbury would qualify.
Roxbury does qualify for Title I.
Okay. I love an explanation of the word "language immersion" study.
We're right now, if, should this funding go through, our plan is to work collaboratively with a consulting firm, basically, whose job it is to start doing immersion in schools. It's not an easy process. It's not just saying, yes, we will teach Spanish to kindergarteners next year. So this is a, this is a group that worked with Chittenden East Supervisor Union who now has a language immersion at Jericho Elementary School. It's now K1. It started at kindergarten last year and now it's K1. Next year will be K2 with the potential of a second kindergarten adding onto it as well in Richmond. So they have done this, they've worked with this group before, and they led them through the process of how to, how to do it.
And my definition of emergent is if I go into that room and they've decided that you're speaking Spanish, that's what they're speaking in that room, is that correct?
Yes.
And along with this thought, have you decided which language you're immersing?
No, we haven't done any conversation around that whatsoever, but they will help us through that process, through all of those decisions.
So the, so the money in the budget for this, when somebody asks me, is for what?
Is to work, is to work with this group closely. Is to work, is to work with this group closely.
So it's, a, a program would not be in next year?
No. It's a development.
There's no guarantee a program would be in.
Yeah, that's where there's some real unclarity here. Have we decided to hire a consultant to cause a program to happen? Or have we decided to hire a consultant to study what that might look like?
We will most likely be going down the road of, of starting an immersion program through working with this consultant.
What is the deliverable that we hope to get from the consultant?
A plan of, of how you, how you open up this, or how you start this whole program.
And there's different, there's obviously different ways to set up these programs. Some are full immersion, a bunch of states like Delaware, Utah.
You're going to ask a question that's too specific for us to answer right now because that's.
Well, let me ask you my question.
Go for it.
So there are dual language immersion programs and, which teach kids English and another language at the same time, half and half. Is this consultant going to look at different options for how we can do this?
I would imagine. I'm not positive, but I would imagine.
Are we going to send out an RFP and see what other organizations might be able to provide us with such products?
We could.
Because twenty-two thousand dollars to one entity that we're familiar with from one school's experience when there, you know, there are a lot of successful programs of this nature going, going on around the country. You know, it makes me wonder if we should maybe look to other organizations too. Not to say that this, this organization might not rise to the top.
We could.
Okay.
Will this organization or any others that we hire help us plan the finances for this?
Yes.
So it would help produce a budget that would say, okay, year one, you're doing kindergarten.
Yes.
Next year, you're doing first grade, unconcussion twice as much or something. And next year, you're doing, so they would plan that out. So the deliverable at the end of the year, that's what I'm trying to get to, for this amount of money, is a plan.
Yes.
Which includes the finances of how it might begin the next year.
And one thing I would correct you on, or I would, I would, yeah. I would think about is that it's not an addition. So it's not adding teachers and, teachers for foreign language or for, for language immersion. It's, it's using spaces that we have already currently. So let's say if we started in kindergarten, we wouldn't be adding a kindergarten class. One of our current kindergarten classes would be dedicated to language immersion.
Right, but as far as I know, we don't have a kindergarten teacher that could teach full day in another language.
Yeah, I'd be sure of that.
Oh. I can be fairly sure it wouldn't pull out.
We choose languages.
Yeah, exactly.
And depending on what language we chose, which is, it may sound minor, but community-wise, that would be a discussion. So, so that, so saying you aren't going to add staff isn't necessarily true. Or it might be a shift in staff or something.
That would be a different, that would be a better way to put it, a shift in staffing, yes.
Well, I think it's very exciting and I was curious if there's any thought on how Roxbury versus Union. I mean, how would that? I know it's early, but.
Part of the processes we were, we'd be discussing.
Yeah, but I think part of the goal of this is to answer a lot of the questions that are being asked right now.
What is the timeline that we're anticipating for this?
A year-long study.
Year-long, okay. So we're thinking, you know, fiscal year to fiscal year kind of thing? Okay.
And if, if they find it feasible and if they lay out a good roadmap, when's the earliest that we could actually have an immersion program? Would it be two years from now, could be a year study and then put in a budget?
I don't want to promise anything about that. I'm not positive, but that's a question that we, I don't think we can answer just yet.
I think the second, you know, two years out would probably be a worst case. The question is whether we might be able to do it in one year, but that's the one I'm not, I wouldn't want to.
Well, that would lead me to believe, are you going to ask for twenty-two thousand next year to continue the study for the next year? You know what I mean? It's, when I'm thinking of the money, I don't have any problem with the program or what's happening. I'm trying to think, how does this money play out? Because now I think I could explain to people, this, this amount of money is for a study to see, see if I'm right. If we can do this, how we would do it and how much would it cost? But now you said maybe at the end of the year, you won't know. So is that going to require more money than next year to continue study?
I can't answer that question. What about going through the year first?
That's a trickier one for me to be explaining.
Could we hear from Jericho Elementary? Do we have?
Mike has a lot of experience with this program since he was the one who helped put it together over there, so.
Great.
Mike, how is that year? Put you on the spot there, big guy.
So I come up.
Yeah.
You weren't prepared for this at all.
I think one point seven be on.
What was the question?
How?
Can you explain a little bit about Chittenden East's history with the group around every language immersion?
Sure. So Chittenden East, we were the first school district in the state to implement language immersion. And we tried to do it on our own. And we had to go back and retrofit quite a bit of work. And the first people we called were the Center for Applied Logistics, which by the way are one of two organizations, both with the same parent organization, that do this work nationwide. There isn't many other folks. Some people have left and are doing private consulting, but they, they worked here. So we called them and they came up and helped us go through what they call the pillars of lang, of immersion programming. And so there's program structure, there's curriculum, instruction, assessment and accountability, staff quality and professional development, family and community and support and resources. And those are things that most organizations, when they try to do it on their own, don't think about. And so these folks come in and through a systematic way, really help us kind of parse out, what is, what are the details of our program so that day one, it starts really strong and well and doesn't fizzle? To give you an example, when we started the program, about three weeks in, we're like, what are we going to do for report cards? Like, how do, how do we assess these kids? We hadn't really put that together. Those are the things that they help us really think about. As well as just the extreme connections that they have to this world of language immersion and dual language and thinking about staffing, thinking about recruitment, thinking about costs. They do talk a bit about costs. Thinking about sustainable practice. They do have connections to a lot of curriculum and, you know, resources that you would need based on many different languages. So they are the people to go to if you're starting a program. Maybe five years in, there might be different folks, but these are definitely strong folks to, to go to.
Had you decided what language you were thinking of before you consulted?
Yes, yes. So we went through a, a very, I don't want to say intense, but it was intentional process of discussing which language. And everyone has a different opinion. We left it to data, we did a lot of research. There was a big push in, in the Chittenden East area for French. And when we started to look for high-quality instructional materials, there were none. So that became a, a good kind of impartial factor in discussing languages. So we determined that we were going to go with Spanish based on that. And people came to consensus on that.
I think that would be a great process before or at the beginning of when you hired somebody. To know, to know which language you're talking about or which language the community was interested in.
Why, why do you think that we have to nail that down at the outset?
Why wouldn't you?
Because we keep our options open. We have, I mean, we have, we have one of the leading schools of instruction of foreign language teachers on the other side of the mountain. We might have teachers, throughout the study, we might realize that we have some teachers who have some skill sets that we weren't fully aware of or certifications that we weren't fully aware of. I don't know if we, we know all of that information or not. And I wonder, you know, Spanish, Chinese, Russian, who knows what, whatever direction we decide to go in. I'd imagine Spanish, there would probably be the most opportunity, but French and Chinese would also probably present a lot of opportunities. And I don't know if we'd want to box ourselves in from the get-go with one.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting boxing in, I'm suggesting that there be a discussion that the community could take part in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For you, at the same time that you're doing, you know, it doesn't have to be done before you hire somebody, but that the community's part of the discussion.
Definitely, they should, the community should definitely be part of the discussion. I agree with that.
Yeah, no, I agree with that too. But I, but I think that, you know, it's part of, you know, it's quite related. Part of the process is figuring out all the factors that go into what makes sense. And also just, you know, I mean, my understanding educationally is that when you immerse particularly younger students in a second language, picking up the third, fourth, fifth, sixth languages becomes much easier once those, you know, once those pathways are developed at early age, the ability to pick up. Yeah, so the, the fact that a second language is at an early age is more important than I think probably what that second language is.
A follow-up question.
From education.
A, a follow-up question. How is it structured in Richmond? Is it all in the target language or is it dual, dual language?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a hundred percent K through two. And then it starts to reduce by ten percent each year after that up till fifth grade. And that's intentional design based on visiting programs. We based it on a program in Mendon Upton, Massachusetts. They have a long-established language immersion program. They became our partner school and our mentor. We also partnered with Middlebury Language Schools and had a broad network of connections. So we're in good shape to work with them and partner with them. They are having Cal come back to work with them. And if the timing worked out, we may be able to collaborate as well with them in terms of costs and all sorts of things.
And, and I'm assuming it's a choice?
Yes, it's a lottery system. Students and families apply to be a part of it.
How does that go?
Pretty well, actually. We spent a lot of time detailing it so that people felt comfortable that it was fair. We reserved spots for free and reduced lunch students first. And it was per community slot, so it went very well.
It started the year after Mike had withdrawn. That's my only critique.
And good with that. Happy SUV.
This is really helpful, thank you so much.
Yeah, welcome. That is, I'm, I'm very excited about this.
Thanks, Mike.
Other questions?
I have a question for you, Jim. In terms of drilling into some of these items, which we've already started to do, I imagine we're going to continue to talk about these issues over the ensuing meetings, is that right? Would you mind laying out the general process that you envision?
Uh, yeah, so we're going to get a second presentation.
Nineteenth out of two?
On the nineteenth in Roxbury. It will be a similar deep dive. So Grant's going to have to bring his, his caffeinated Coca-Cola in. And that'll give Roxbury an opportunity to talk. And we'll also, you know, my guess is there might be some additional bumpers or tweaks then. You know, further, further opportunity for the board to, to delve in. Then we're going to have a, another private public presentation on January second, which will be closer to final. And again, I'm not sure how much more information we'll have than the state, but a little more.
Yeah, we might have some more. Equalized pupils, I don't know when we'll get the first one, but I'm sure we're going to get multiple versions of it as time goes on.
And then I have to go look at the calendar again, but I think we've got one more shot scheduled and I think time to have perhaps additional before we have to go along.
So typically between the first and second, there aren't a whole lot of changes that I make other than new data that comes through. And then it's usually after the second one that I will start looking to see, do you have things you want me to change before the third cut? And then between the third and the fourth, there might be some changes. But by the time it's the fourth cut, we're pretty much baked at, at that point.
Yeah, and there's different providers, we're not doing our arbitrary, pick a number and don't go over it. Yes.
Yeah, that was maybe crazy.
Yeah, sure, just had kind of a general observation. So Grant, the capital plan looks great. And I know the village school doesn't need work, it's in largely great shape. But when I look at the capital planning table, we're all the way out to FY twenty-five and the village school hasn't shown up anywhere. It wasn't in the bond, it's in here. Like, I know there's going to be some small things here and there. And I'm a little bit nervous if people might start asking, hey, what about us? And we're looking like six, seven, eight years out post-merger. Maybe some benches here and there, maybe a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Sooner or later, I think people are going to ask, hey, what else the village school do?
Yeah, and I think the, the first pushback is the capital plan is supposed to be for big projects. Roof replacements, boiler replacements, you know, major bathroom replacements, regular replenishments. You'll see window replacements on here, but we're not talking about like five or six. We're talking about.
Old buildings.
Oh, there you go. I would also say that, so if Roxbury had a roof replacement that was in this timeline, it certainly would be on here. But I think we're good with some of those things. I think that another argument would be, we were thinking we might get down to a point where we're doing fifty thousand dollars for projects in the general, not the capital, fifty thousand for kind of more routine projects at each of the three Montpelier schools and twenty-five maybe at Roxbury because it's smaller. But like this year, we're probably closer to seventy-five thousand maybe at each Montpelier school. And I think in Roxbury, it's like, what, sixty-two and a half or something? So we're putting almost as much money in Roxbury in the general fund budget as we are the other schools. And we are doing a lot of work there. We did a lot of work in the kitchen. We're looking at bathrooms, we're looking at town hall. So there is going to be some significant investment in projects. It's just they're not big enough on here yet because the big ticket items aren't, like you said, you're in good shape.
Like I said, I didn't have any concerns, but it wasn't, it's FY twenty-five and, you know, people might start asking and I'm just going to make sure that it was.
It would be more convenient if somebody would rip some holes in the roof and we can put something on.
Andrew, could you speak to any?
If access errors go wrong.
Could you speak to what you're thinking about for Roxbury for next year? I know the door, the town hall.
Yeah, absolutely. We have some of the safety, safety grant money to, to the new, new town hall. We have money allocated to spruce up the town hall. There's also, we're looking at, oh, the biggest need that's, that building is the bathrooms. And that we've been budgeted, we've got money in the budget to revamp this, this coming here.
In the general fund?
Yeah. Just so when Ryan or Lisa get, get those questions, they could say details as to what, what is in the general fund?
Yeah, and a couple additional comments on that. Yeah, another school that's not on this is, is the high school. At least not listed. And, you know, there have been some community questions about the fact that the bond did not cover the middle school. And our answer has been, we have established this, this capital fund that is going to address some of the issues at the middle school. It'd be like the middle school is eight of the twelve schedule items. So, you know, this is, I think, data to back up people who are, that continue to ask about, you know, the middle school, the fact that the bond didn't cover the middle school. The data is here, the, the capital fund does have quite an eye on the middle school.
And, and, and yeah, I think, we didn't ignore it. I mean, Andrew's been looking at all the schools and the requirements. So I would say, you know, honestly, if there's a school that needs a roof, it doesn't matter which school, it would be on this list. The high school is a good example, we just did most of the roof here. We're going to do another set of roof as part of the bond project or as part of fund balance. We've used a lot of, invested a lot of fund balance in schools too. So this is, and there's time to tweak, as I mentioned. I mean, this was a kind of a, a quick, quick, you know, baptism by fire for Andrew to come in and then not only have to deal with all the stuff we're dealing with, but then also try to build a budget. So I have no doubt that we'll be making some changes to it. But I think it's a first, a good first blush at, at a long-term look for now. And it won't be long before there will be something that pops up that's big enough to end up on this list for Roxbury. The bathrooms might have been, but we kept enough money in the budget to try to tackle that in the general fund instead of pushing it out.
And since you've mentioned that the high school wasn't really on here, a lot of the money in the bond, however, is going to the high school. Can you explain?
The majority of it would take up the playground. That's important.
Can you explain how you calculate that there'll continue to be an increase in enrollment? Given the birth figures? I mean, how, how do you figure that out?
Yeah, it's, it's an actual big modeled spreadsheet that looks at historical trends. And it looks at in-migration and out-migration from year to year. So it looks at, over a 10-year period, we will have 108% of first graders as second graders. So we'll actually have an in-migration. It looks at, not only birth data to calculate kindergarten, but then it looks at year by year, what's the trend of in-migration and out-migration? I'm a little nervous about the model right now because of the impact of adding Roxbury in. And that's not in historical data. So it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how accurate the model continues to be over the next few years. And it may take a while to settle in with new, good trend data over five, 10 years. But, but it is based on looking at historical, historically, how many first graders become second graders? How many second graders become third graders? So, I mean, it's, it's good historical data that's modeled that more than one district uses. So I think it's as good as it gets. It's all, as you know, it's all a little bit witchcraft.
Well, and I'm thinking, there's only so many houses and only so many people can live in Montpelier. And you keep telling me it's going to increase, so you must be assuming I'll sell my house and somebody will move in my house with three kids.
We're going to change it into a duplex. Now, I think that's where the model could be flawed because I don't know that the model considers saturation of.
Right, that's what I was wondering. Because we've been lucky. We've been increasing.
And, I mean, what will happen is the model will correct itself over time. Because as real estate and housing is, is saturated, you're not going to be seeing those increases anymore. So the model will correct itself, but it could be wrong in the near term as that dynamic is occurring. So, yeah, I'm hopeful that we still see some level of increases, but I think it's going to slow. It might have a correction in the model, just like, you know, the stock market has a correction in it. We might see a correction in the model at some point, but right now it's still looking good.
For sure.
Just, I don't think Montpelier's going to get full. It's not finite, so.
No, I didn't mean that, but.
Okay, just checking. On the budget overview, for FY '19, you have $118,000 for the proposed bond. For FY '20, you said we're going to be paying more on the bond because we're paying capital and interest, not just interest. But that bond says zero. Did that go somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we had to show it as a separate article last year.
Okay.
So the 118, I had to show separately in case that didn't get approved, so it would come out. Now it's just part of, of the budget along with all the other line expenses. And that's probably something I should have pointed out. The other thing that you might ask about is the grant funds budget. You'll see that in '18, there was a separate number for grant funds. Because the way it used to be built is, we didn't break out how we were going to spend title money or IDF money. We just said, you know, we will probably get $200,000 in title funds. So add 200,000 to the expense at the end. Now we say, we're going to spend Title I money on this person, that person. This is the salary. This is the benefit. It's rolled into our actual budget now. So, you know, it'll be nice next year when we don't have to show that grant funds budget line because that history will be long. But those, some of that uniqueness is going to happen for a few years. But I should have probably called out that that proposed bond was there because it wasn't proposed at that point. Once it's approved, it goes into general fund or the general budget.
So the, the other question I have is you want us to make a decision about taking $87,000 from the fund balance? And I don't think that you've told us what the fund balance is. Are we, are you wanting to wait until we have the audit, so?
Yes, and, and I'm probably going to get a draft of the, I was hoping that we might be able to have the audit available for the next week. That's where we slated it to go. But, and it's not the auditor's fault. We, we had, we were delayed in getting some information because of the hiccup we had with fixed assets. So we're hoping to get a draft of the audit by the end of this week. I don't know that we're going to have a final version in time for the 19th, but I do think that I will have numbers. So I think I will be able to say what the fund balance is. It's, it's big because we finished last year very good.
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't want to say the word, the number out loud, but, you know, I'm thinking it's like 700,000 or something like that. So it's 87.5 you could afford.
Okay, I'm just checking. And we, we had talked before, when we set up the capital plan and we talked last year, maybe the year before, when, about this fund balance situation. Not all districts have a fund balance or they have policies regarding their fund balance and how it can be spent or what amount you maintain and so forth. I think we have a policy that says we have to maintain 2%. And we haven't made any, we haven't had any further conversation about what we, we have free latitude with what we do with beyond 2%.
I, I believe that is within the board's purview. I mean, what legally, you have an article that says you have the authority to decide how to spend it.
Okay.
So I think now that you have that legal authority, it is within your realm to decide kind of the operation, operational rules behind how you want to manage it.
Okay, but you, you don't have a recommendation for us as to how we?
I think that might be a subject for another day. But I do, I, 2%, I wouldn't go higher than 2%.
I just asked because we talked about it like last year, but that was a long time ago.
I wouldn't go higher than 2%.
Okay.
I think that would certainly be the most I would say you should require that, that is maintained.
Okay.
And the reason why you want to have some is because you never know. You know, Mary does the best job she can at forecasting like outside placement needs for 19 months in advance. But you don't know if three kids are going to move in and need to be placed.
Correct.
That could bite you at any point. So it is good to have some money, but I think 2% is certainly enough.
But isn't it good?
One, one question on the, on the audit. I think that the Montpelier board is supposed to meet to accept that audit?
You are correct.
Okay, just checking.
And that is probably maybe your last and final act.
That is the line.
Yes, yes, yes. And the Ro, and Roxbury as well?
It will be.
Okay.
On the fund balance, can I just follow up briefly? Couple of meetings ago, quarterly financial report, we were looking at anticipated unreserved fund balance of like 900, $2,000. $500. You just mentioned a $700,000 figure. Has that changed a little bit?
I don't, I don't have it. I wasn't.
Okay.
900 was about right, but I wasn't sure if that was after you had to, what's the bottom line whenever?
900.
There's some things you have to subtract out of it. We should make sure that.
There's the unreserved, which is like 1.14 million, then possible Roxbury deficit settlement. And then we get to the anticipated.
I wasn't sure if 900 was the bottom or 900 was before those came out of it, so.
So that's what we're talking about?
Yeah, and there's a. And there's good reason to have a good chunk of that because we're heading into a 4.9 million dollar bond project where costs right now are through the roof because of tariff issues and all kinds of things. And just saturation of, of vendors doing work and not, not having people who do work. So we're seeing costs way up there. So it is nice to have a little bit of cushion that we might be able to put in there to make sure we deliver what we hoped to deliver. So I would keep that set aside. We do have the Roxbury deficit we still have to cover. So 87.5, I'm, I'm fine. I think you can definitely afford that. The problem is not this year.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem is next year.
Yeah, I, I generally, I don't like to spend the fund balance in that, for that reason. But I just wanted to, some context on that.
And that's what I was going to say. I think of spending the fund balance on one-time things, not on your budget because then next year.
Yeah.
And that's why it was associated with what we think might be another drop in one-time project costs. So both could go away. But we're still in that position where we.
Pandora's box in a way.
We don't want to wash. Maybe we do get rid of the fund balance revenue so that if we have a drop in one-time project costs, that helps stabilize the tax rate. Especially since we're not going to be seeing a huge drop in tuition for that kind of thing. So, yeah, I didn't realize that until the numbers started shaking out and the tax rates started shaking out. Then I was like, wow, why did we put that in there?
Right, with the higher yield.
Yeah.
We're losing our superintendent here. She's looking pretty weird.
Oh, yeah, what, hour 16? We're good. Keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Grant.
Thank you very much. I will try to speed it up a little bit next time in Roxbury, but as, as Jim mentioned, it is kind of the opportunity for Roxbury folks to see it for the first time, so.
I can't really shorten it.
You should have your caffeine as well.
Yeah.
Thank you to all the administrators that were here too.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, we didn't ask the 5 million questions. We were glad you were here.
Did you hear him talking about MTSU? Did you hear that? Did you hear that talk about business management?
It's very impressive.
So, motion to adjourn.
I move for your adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I'll move to the other.